Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for March 27, 2023. We -- Councilmember Zahn is attending remotely. Is she up there? Not yet. And there she is. And Councilmember Lee has an excused absence. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyenhaus.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Deputy Mayor, could you lead us in the flag salute, please? We have a proclamation tonight for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we have Mary Ellen Stone, the Executive Director of KSCARC, here to accept. I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll have you come and say something, and we'll do a photo op together, okay? Whereas sexual assault is pervasive, every 68 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States. And whereas Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ, and people plus people, non-binary people, elders, people with disabilities, and others who have been historically oppressed are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas rape is among the most underreported crime for reasons that include the victim's fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized, additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism contribute further to the silencing of victims. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concern for safety, physical and mental health conditions, including symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas King County is home to many organizations that provide culturally and linguistically specific services for survivors of sexual assault, these services are critical to effectively respond to many survivors' specific needs. And whereas only by working together as a community can we prevent and alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all while standing up to attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual assault. Now, therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of my city council, join advocates in communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, youths, adults, and families in our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Councilmembers, it's really great to be here. I just want to say a few things. I know you have a full agenda. Some of you know that I'm retiring this year. This is a -- obviously, it's a big personal deal. So I feel like I'm on my sort of reflective tour. And in that vein, I want to thank you because KSCARC has been serving the residents of Bellevue for 40-plus years. You were one of the first cities. You were one of the first to stand with us and say, "This is an issue we have to address. We need to be more aware. We want to make sure that people get services. We want to make sure that there's some funding coming in." So thank you for standing up because that's what so much of this is about, that we have a National Sexual Assault Awareness Day. It's a great way to sort of remind people about that. I have buttons for you. It says, "Be Loud." Councilmember Zahn was at a breakfast a couple weeks ago, and we gave everyone buttons. So you've already got yours. So good that you're -- I mean, if you weren't with us, we'd have to mail this to you. But it is so much of the awareness. And so thank you for doing that. Now, every year, we're responding to about 200 victims who are residents of Bellevue who reach out to us for help. That's not the full number. You know, we know many more people maybe don't know where to turn. We're working on that. They may feel like there's no one out there to help them. But of those 200, about 50%, about 100 are children and teens. So we know this continues to be a really important piece that we have to address. And I will say, as you look forward, think more about prevention. We -- it's easy to feel, and we do every day, how do we respond to the people who are calling us every day? And we've also got to be looking out farther. And we've got to be looking at, how do we make the shift? This is a good first start. But for the next generations, we want to focus on prevention as well. So thank you. Thank you for standing with us for these many years. Thank you for being loud.
Let's get a picture. So we have an amendment on our agenda tonight to include an extra executive session at the end here. So Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion with the amendment?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda. I'm amended to add an executive session as Item 15B pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1110 -- or sorry, 1110, 110, 1B related to property acquisition.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, could you please tell us who signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are eight pre-registered speakers on our list. However, I do see five speakers in support of the Bike Bellevue. And as I'm going to tell you here shortly, the council can only hear from three people in support or opposition of any one particular item. In addition, oral comms is for a period not to extend 30 -- or not to go past 30 minutes. Each speaker will be given three minutes to make their comments. In addition, I do want to note that in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure Laws, the use of public facilities during elections, no election-related topics may be discussed during oral communications. This includes discussion of ballot measures, endorsements of candidates or political parties, and speaking on behalf of a campaign, including your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be given a verbal warning, and it will be considered a disruption to the meeting and may be removed from council chambers. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who's joining us in person, who's Andrew Pardo.
Hi there. My name's Andrew Pardo. I live at 10915 Southeast First Street, across from Toys R Us. I've been bike commuting in Bellevue since the days when I could feel safe riding down Bellevue Way to the I-90 Bridge. I bike for transportation more than recreation. I bike for much the same reason that I drive my pickup. I have to get somewhere. I choose to bike when it makes the most sense, just like driving, just like walking to City Hall tonight. I bike commute to work most days using the bike lane across downtown and over to the Spring District. It's hard to be in the general-purpose lanes with car drivers when I'm riding a slow, comfy city bike, even for a fearless, hardened bike rider like myself. Folks at work often ask about biking, now that more of us are encouraged to come back into the office. And I recommend biking in Bellevue, saying things like, "Well, it's improving, and most of your route is protected." But being honest with ourselves, it hasn't been that long since we had a serious injury on the route that most of them would have to take, the paint-protected lanes on Northrup connecting the two halves of the 520 Trail. A guy was riding a scooter on that route in the bike lane when a driver turned into him. This happened on March 3, just a little over three weeks ago. We all joke that drivers want the same thing, fewer cars on the road. But drivers more want to feel safe when driving. We don't joke about that because the fact is that we, as a city and a society, do as much as we can to keep drivers safe. Our road infrastructure is designed to make sure that even the most inattentive driver can't hurt themselves. We need to do the same for would-be bike riders and scooter riders and pedestrians. Unfortunately, for far too many trips in Bellevue, driving is the only choice that feels safe and convenient. That's a big part why I keep my pickup truck, even though my daily driver only has two wheels. I feel I need it, even though it doesn't go 1,000 miles in a year. It was 500 last year. I'd love to live in a city where I could get along without a car. But mostly, I'd love for that city to be Bellevue. I appreciate the work you've done to make biking in Bellevue better, and I appreciate the time you're taking to improve the situation even more. We say we want to make biking and walking in Bellevue safe and comfortable and convenient. We say we want to achieve Vision Zero. Now's the time to act. This is truly an investment that will pay off for decades. Thank you for taking the time to study the project principles tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matt Jack, who's joining us virtually. Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, members of the council. On behalf of the Bellevue Downtown Association, I'm commenting to support the launch of the Bike Bellevue Initiative at the Transportation Commission and express appreciation for the city kicking off this work with a set of principles to guide the allocation process of the CIP funds. I particularly --
Oops.
-- principle number seven that identifies engagement as an important element of this process. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. We missed -- we lost you for a minute. Can you go back two sentences and continue? We'll set the clock again.
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. "I'm commenting to support the launch of the Bike Bellevue Initiative at the Transportation Commission and express appreciation for the city kicking off this work with a set of principles to guide the allocation process of the CIP funds. I particularly want to call out the principle number seven that identifies engagement as an important element to this process. As the BDA ends its -- nears the end of its work on the Curve Management Plan, we also plan to launch our own initiative to evaluate downtown's multimodal system alongside future projects and plans with a goal to update our own downtown access strategy. That scope includes downtown's bike network. So the timing of Bike Bellevue syncs up nicely with our future work. This is a great opportunity for the city and the BDA to collaborate together. We look forward to learning more about Bike Bellevue this evening and our future engagement on this topic. Thank you for your leadership and attention to my comments."
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, can the media room turn the volume down on the virtual participants before we call our next one? Thank you. Our next speaker is David Loudenback, who is joining us in person. Mr. Loudenback has asked staff to assist him if necessary in his statement. So Ms. Luce is going to join him at the table. Welcome.
Okay. Okay. Hi, I'm David Loudenback. The My Bellevue app is not working. Hitting new requests and going down to ADA requests, selecting an address, it's just a continuous loop. I was told to do this by Blaine so that I could report crosswalks that need more time on the meter to walk before traffic starts. I was told by several police that taking pictures of cars' license plates that don't stop doesn't do anything. Drivers that don't stop at crosswalks thus is also a big concern of mine and goes hand in hand with this crosswalk subject. Thank you very much."
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. I guess I can't ask you to ask me any questions.
Well, I'll tell you what. If you send us an email with your comments that we just heard, then we have a chance to respond to you.
Yeah, because like, ever since I've lived in Bellevue, moving in with my mom and her husband and my tennis shoes, I've been like walking gobs and gobs. And yeah. It's the little things that I've noticed, you know, and saying hi to the neighbors. And even though it's not always sunny, it's always sunny above the clouds.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming down.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pearl Loong, and she is joining us here in person.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyenhaus, members of the city council, and City Manager Miyaki. My name is Pearl Loong. I am here tonight on behalf of Amazon to comment on the Bike Bellevue project principles. First, I'd like to express appreciation for the city's leadership on over a decade of work and investments to improve pedestrian and bike safety and connectivity in Bellevue. With approximately 10,000 employees currently in Bellevue and a return to office starting later this spring, Amazon offers a wide range of employee commute benefits to reduce dependence on single occupancy vehicle commute. That includes our comprehensive bike benefit that provides free bike leasing, secure parking, preventative bike maintenance in locker and shower facilities, with consideration to our colleagues who bike to work as well as our neighbors and members of the community who bike in the city. Amazon supports Bike Bellevue principles, especially its commitment to reducing fatalities and serious injury crashes. As downtown and the city continues to grow, we are grateful to the city council for making -- for continuing to make Bellevue safe and connected for people who walk, roll, and bike. We look forward to learning more during the study session tonight and look forward to staying engaged as the city conducts public engagement throughout the Bike Bellevue process. Thank you for the opportunity to share your comments tonight.
Thank you. So that's three in support of the bike. And I know there's a lot of people here tonight. How many people are here in support of? Oh, good. Thank you. So sending us emails, participating in this process will be wonderful. So thank you for taking the time to be here tonight.
The next speaker on our list is Patrick Satyanathan. And Mr. Satyanathan is joining us virtually. Mr. Satyanathan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, your time begins now.
Okay. Thank you. And my name is Patrick Satyanathan. I've been a resident of Bellevue since 2006. I spoke to you last time. Sorry. Good evening to the mayor and the city council. Who are the pleasantries? And I brought up the issue of police body cameras last time, and I was glad to hear that that item has been budgeted for. Some respondent in the room spoke up and said he'd get in touch with me afterwards, but he did not. That does not matter. I have two further concerns about the police. One is the Office of Accountability. It seems that -- rather sad that the Office of Accountability is just a policeman working who puts on his Office of Accountability hat a few hours a week and does that job. So if I send in a complaint, he puts on his -- whoever it is, he, she, puts on their Office of Accountability hat, reads my complaint, and says, replies with a form letter saying, "Your issue will be -- I will investigate myself after I take my hat off." So he comes back tomorrow to the office. He investigates himself. And in a couple of weeks, he sends back, puts on his hat again of Office of Accountability, and replies saying, "I investigated myself. No misconduct here. Things are fine." You might see why that might -- there might be problems with such a system. I find it rather sad that there is not budget enough for a separate, independent Office of Accountability. That's one issue. The other issue is your online reporting system. As with many of Bellevue City's online systems, that one really doesn't work. For anybody who's tried to change the Bellevue Utility Account password, you should know what I'm talking about. But this concerns uploading documents, supplementary reports to a police case. I tried once. Once, I tried uploading two separate documents to two separate case numbers. And again, every response to such an online upload is done on a Friday afternoon at around 3:00 PM. And it seems it's just one person, a clerk or something, sitting somewhere. That person read my first supplementary report and rejected it for some reason. Not applicable. You should contact the appropriate office. The second one was about misconduct of Bellevue police. I got the same reason, rejected for the same reason. You should contact the applicable office. That's your office. Seems they didn't really read it. Now hurry to get home the weekend after all. So this state of affairs is rather deplorable. That's all I have to say and about these two concerns of mine about the Bellevue Police Department. Pardon me if I sound out of breath. I was just getting some exercise on my exercise bike while waiting for my turn. Thank you for listening to me. That's it.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
And I just want to say, I know that somebody was intending to get back to Mr. Satyanathan. I'm not sure how to say that name. But anyway, I'll make sure that we do.
We'll go ahead and retake all comments and feedback seriously. So we'll take a look at --
All right. Take a look into what the commenter just mentioned in our oral comms.
Thank you.
So I can speak? Thanks. Is you high, my lovely council? A dirty, croaky Nazi pig. My name, Alex Zimmerman, and I'm candidate for the ship to the moon. We have a big problem with Bellevue School right now. What if one kill 1,000 children and make thousands and thousands of parents not happy? And I spoke here for many times before this happened right now. Situation absolutely idiotic and very dangerous. It's real dangerous. It's exactly what's happened. It's not offensive. It's dangerous. It can kill people. So I spoke about this, but you, Mayor, last time told me council not involved in this business. So right now, situation very simple. From my understanding, five council, include you, is a member of Bellevue School. So how council, who five council, important doing business with school, what is supposed to be doing by definition? You know what it means? And you told you don't do this. Sorry. I call you, you are nice liar. We need change this because it's very dangerous for children. They brainwash children, kill children, and parents not happy. I know this. So that's number one. Number two, what is I want to speak with you about? This election go right now. So everybody, like Seattle, another city, have least of people who go for election. You don't have this. In Bellevue, second big city in state Washington after Seattle, in more intellectual and rich in America. It's very important. And what has happened now, you know what it means? Five years ago, you established this policy, 10 people for 30 minutes, only because I come every day and speak, every meeting and speak. You want to take me out. You did this trick, you know what it means? Stop and misspeak many times. You acting like a real Nazi pig. Is this exactly what I told you? Is this very important? This America, freedom of speech, and I'm sick. I live in this Bellevue city for 25 years. So intellectual, rich city, acting like a human garbage, like a dirty garbage rats. So please, cut this 10 people 30 minutes. Bring back 25 years I talked to you. First time from '96. And we go and go deeper and deeper with Democratic mafia in Ucar right now. Total fascism, classic fascism. Every 5% vote for Democrat. This exactly same percentage what is vote for Adolf Hitler and Nazi in 2009. You understand who are you? You are pure Nazi. Stand up, America. Clean this dirty chamber from this crook. It's exactly what is important.
That is the end of our --
It shows to people you're back, you know what it means? It's not your ethics standard. Looks is still easy.
Mr. Zimmerman.
That is the end of our pre-registered list this evening. I'd ask if there is anyone else joining us in council chambers or anyone online who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. Again, we have reached the maximum number of speakers in support of the Bike Bellevue item. Okay. No additional hands, Mayor.
Okay. So, under Council Business and New Initiatives, I'd like to ask for an excused absence for the next meeting on -- for the meeting on April 4th -- 3rd, 4-3, April 3. I will attend remotely, and I'd like to ask the deputy mayor to manage the meeting that day.
Certainly, Mayor. You ready for the motion?
I'm so ready.
I move to allow Mayor Robinson to participate remotely on the April 3, 2023 council meeting.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have some council liaison recommendations for appointments to the library board. And then we have council liaison recommendations for reappointments to other boards and commissions. So is there a motion to appoint, let's see, Sam Fitzgerald and Kat Pipkin?
Correct. I'll do them individually. I move to appoint Sam Fitzgerald to a partial term on the library board expiring May 31, 2025.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I move to appoint Kat Pipkin to a partial term on the library board expiring May 31, 2023.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, welcome, Sam and Kat. Wonderful. And then I think we'll do this next as a group. So go ahead.
I move to reappoint Lydia Aldridge to the Arts Commission, Negan Conlou to the Environmental Services Commission, Angela White, Samara Amrifaz, and Ted Mansfield to the Human Services Commission, Cap Kepkin to -- that was already mentioned.
I think it's a reappointment.
Or is it a reappointment? Okay.
She's going to finish the term.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Pap Kepkin to the Library Advisory Board, Creighton Gopel, Carolyn Ferris, and Vishal Bargava to the Planning Commission, and Karen Stash and Albert Ting to the Transportation Commission, each with a term ending on May 31, 2027.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your service on these boards and commissions. Next up is the Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we have two study session items, three, but only two with presentations. So, Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce the first one?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The first study session topic is on a topic that you just heard about under oral communications. It is the city's Bike Bellevue Initiative. And just by way of background, the Bike Bellevue is an initiative which includes projects who are intended to fill gaps in the city's bicycle network in Bellevue's downtown, Wilberton, and Bell Red neighborhoods. Tonight, staff are seeking council approval of the proposed principles that will be used by both staff and the Transportation Commission to select and implement bike projects in Bellevue. So joining us this evening at the table are Andrew Singlelock, his director, as well as to his right, France Lauren Hurst, Mobility Planning and Solutions Manager, both from the Transportation Department. With that, I'll hand it off to you, Andrew.
Well, thank you, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyenhaus, and city council members. Paula Stevens couldn't be here today. She's recovering from a medical procedure. But I did want to talk about Bike Bellevue. And essentially, it's currently a capital improvement program. We are rebranding the name of it to Bike Bellevue. Currently, it's called Growth Corridor High Comfort Bicycle Network Implementation. We think that Bike Bellevue sounds a little bit better. So anyway.[1644.74] So anyway, and essentially, as Brad mentioned, they're low cost, easy to implement projects to facilitate separated bicycle connectivity throughout the urban core of the city. Next slide, please. And the direction from the council that we're seeking is to approve the, the project principles and then also to refer to the Transportation Commission for implementation. Next slide. And we'll give you a little history of bicycle planning and implementation in the city of Bellevue. Talk about the current CIP project. Take a look at the project area map, also the public engagement plan and, and the principles themselves. Next slide.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council members. The Bike Bellevue project aligns with the city's 2009 pedestrian bicycle transportation plan and the vision of a connected network of bicycle infrastructure. And this vision was reaffirmed in 2015 when council approved program principles for the pedestrian bicycle implementation initiative and directed the Transportation Commission to work with staff in accelerating project completion targets in the 2009 plan. In 2016, the Transportation Commission endorsed the Bicycle Rapid Implementation Program that included citywide bikeway projects. And in the six years since voter approval of the transportation levy, city has implemented 59 miles of bikeway projects as compared to just 17 miles in the prior six-year period. Now, despite project bikeway progress on 108th Northeast, Main Street and elsewhere, significant gaps in the network remain. And in the last two capital investment program budget cycles, council approved additional funding for bicycle infrastructure investments to make the transportation system safer, more equitable, sustainable and accessible for everyone. Bike Bellevue, so in, in 2022, council also approved the Mobility Implementation Plan, which set multimodal approach to infrastructure development as a priority and established performance targets for every travel mode, including bicycles. And Bike Bellevue also aligns with council's commitment to a safe system approach to Vision Zero and striving to reduce to zero the number of fatalities, serious injuries on city streets by 2030. Safe mobility for people walking and bicycling and rolling is the city's highest priority road safety challenge. Even though these vulnerable road users represent just 5% of all crashes, they account for 55% of all fatal and serious injury crashes. As Andrew mentioned, we have rebranded CIP PWB 85 to Bike Bellevue. In the last council CIP process, additional funds to a total of 4.5 million was set aside in the 2329 time period. The scope and description for this CIP is for staff to design and implement rapid build bicycle projects on existing streets in the downtown Wilberton and Bell Red neighborhoods and to establish a grid of safe and comfortable connections to key destinations for people of all ages and abilities. Bike Bellevue neighborhoods collectively represent just 8.5% of citywide geography. However, they account for 65% of citywide jobs, 52% of citywide transit usage, 36% of the city's high injury network and 34% of all fatalities and serious injuries involving people walking and biking. And this project area, as we all know, is experiencing rapid growth development. And by 2025, we're expecting to welcome additional 30,000 jobs, 27,000 residents and the opening of five light rail stations and significant progress on East Trail. Bike Bellevue corridors depicted in green lines on this project area map are the missing element in this pivotal moment in Bellevue's multimodal evolution. And what's reflected on this map are the connect connectivity opportunities that will be realized between those green lines and the existing bicycle network in black lines, the regional trails 520 and East Trail in orange and the Grand Connection in pink, as well as the link stations, green as blue boxes. What this map doesn't do adequately is reflect the connectivity realized more broadly, citywide and regionally, that this set of investments would bring about. And so in future council briefings, commission briefings, we will bring new and improved mapping for that purpose. During Bike Bellevue, staff proposes expanded community engagement to ensure that we reach out to Bellevue's diverse residents, employees and employers to ensure that they have adequate opportunities to inform project design, project prioritization. And staff is committed to updating the Transportation Commission during its regular check-ins with that input that we receive throughout the process. In the agenda memo itself, we detailed the strategies we're proposing to advance, summarized on this slide. We believe these strategies will accelerate project implementation and better meet the needs of the community. And at the conclusion of Bike Bellevue, which we envision as early next year, we expect the Transportation Commission to formalize its recommendation to the Transportation Director for approval. So tonight, staff seeks council approval of the principles that will guide the Transportation Commission's work. And these principles align and are updated and informed by the 2015 Pedestrian Bicycle Implementation Initiative Principles to better account for policies that have been adopted since that time. So the first of these, safety speaks to council's commitment to a safe system approach to Vision Zero. Connectivity aligns with council's commitment to complete streets. Comfort speaks to direction in the Mobility Implementation Plan. Evaluation reflects our commitment to incorporate a data-informed process from planning through implementation. Coordination speaks to our intent to align this work with other one-city work planned priorities. Partnerships, number six, speaks to our intent to secure, to pursue additional funding opportunities to realize the full complement of projects identified in Bike Bellevue. And the last of these, number seven, speaks to engagement and our commitment to robust, diverse outreach. With that, Andrew, you have some follow-up.
Yeah, we received a couple of notices from Eastside For All and Hope Link, just talking about equity. We had thought that we had embedded equity into all of the principles. But I think they raise a good point and we want to call it out specifically as its own principle. And I'll let Franz explain what that is.
Thank you, Andrew. So two proposed refinements to the principles reflected in attachment B of your agenda memo. The first being in the preamble, the lead-in section to the principles, the first sentence incorporating the word equitably. And then including a new principle, principle number eight, as equity, promote equity and inclusion in the development and delivery of bicycle projects consistent with the city's diverse city advantage plan. Bike Bellevue will center equity, access, inclusion and opportunity in project delivery. And with that, staff seeks council approval on the project principles to guide the Transportation Commission and staff's work on Bike Bellevue. Any questions, comments, please?
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna start and then I'll call on deputy mayor, council members on, council member Robertson, councilman Barxdale and councilmember Stokes. So when I was elected to the council and we started in 2014, that's when I started bicycling in Bellevue because I knew that all these decisions were coming and I didn't think I could make a good decision unless I experienced the routes myself. And I'm, it was a really good decision on my part because you just cannot appreciate how important it is to have these connected networks. I always say this, that the only thing more dangerous than a city without infrastructure is a city with partial infrastructure. And when you look at slide seven, if you wouldn't mind moving it back to side, slide seven, you can see all the incomplete routes that we have in Bellevue. And as somebody who rides my bike a lot, I sense those. And so it's, sometimes you're surprised by them, sometimes you know enough to work around them. But we have got to complete these routes. I have to say, I really appreciate the people who've come down tonight who have experienced these, the cycling experience as well in Bellevue and who have advocated so strongly for this. Ever since I got on the council, there's been a strong voice in support of this work and I appreciated that. I would like to recommend that we push to ask sound transit. I know this has nothing to do with this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. To ask sound transit to open the Spring District Ped Bike Routes because they, they're all fenced off and they can fence off the light rail station tracks without fencing off the sidewalk and the, and the bicycle route. Because that's a really important connection that's already built and we just can't access it. So I definitely support this. I also support the equity options that you, that you recommended. Deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, strong supporter of this. Thank you so much, Franz and Andrew, for all your hard work on this. So excited to see an actual kind of east-west route here of infrastructure. Because in fact, mayor and I have discussed this many times where it's really dangerous. And, and I, and I think this route is the only one where I can see where we can have a situation and infrastructure that can make it comfortable for people to have protected lanes. And I did have a question about protected lanes. If that will just be paint and post, will it be planters? Will it be more than that? I'm sure you have a vision for that already. But you know, for me, if, 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 you know, from expert to beginner, if they don't feel comfortable, be it going to get their groceries or they're, you know, just exercising, people are not going to use the infrastructure. So it's good to have it, but it has got to be safe and people got to feel comfortable there. So I would like to get an answer on that. Also, on the, on, on, and I know you'll be coming back to us, but on the safety piece of this as well, because there'll be a lot of right turns going into those businesses there, like almost, boy, back to back, right? I'm just wondering how we're going to manage that. And I know you're gonna do extensive outreach with all the businesses there. But you know, once this infrastructure starts to get used a lot, I could just see a lot of cases where there's going to be a lot of right turns of cars wanting to turn into, you know, be it the car wash or the mechanic, what have you. So just curious about how you're thinking about that right now as well. But bottom line, I'm so excited we're at this point. We need more infrastructure across the city, but this is a great start. And I can't wait to have the commission go forward with this and get this implemented. But I'll leave you with those two questions.
I would say basically it is more central, things like painting and some of the ballards that would be part of the separation. Franz, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, so you had two questions. The first was on, on the separation. Our intent is to really understand the context along these corridors. So those higher volume, higher speed corridors, we would be looking at greater separation to reduce the stress consistent with the Mobility Implementation Plan. So we'll be taking our cues from the Mobility Implementation Plan on the degree to which separation is warranted on, on these corridors. We will be incorporating industry best practice. There's been so much progress made nationally in this regard. And so that will come to bear in the design. And we will also, as mentioned earlier, seek community input on project design refinements so that we can get it right and it is responsive to community needs. And on this, did, did that answer?
Yeah.
Is that okay? And then the second one on, on those critical conflicts, absolutely, the, the right hook is a, is a major area of concern at driveways, at intersections. And as I said before, we will be looking at industry best practice. We'll be studying this and of course, we'll be engaging with the adjacent businesses to ensure that their concerns around access are addressed as well. It's a balancing act, of course.
Certainly.
We hope that with it, more people out there, there will be safety in numbers. That is also an observed trend in other communities that have built out networks. One of the challenges, when you don't have that connection, you don't have a lot of people, it takes people by surprise. When you have that volume build up, it becomes safer for everyone.
Indeed, thank you.
Councilmembers on, I love your background, very appropriate for tonight.
Oh, it's part of East Trail.
I know.
Anyway, thank you. You know, thank you for the presentation. I really like the new name Bike Bellevue because I think the Bicycle Rapid Implementation Plan is quite a mouthful to say. And so I really like the new tagline. And you know, when I look at the map, I remember having been on the Transportation Commission and we were trying to create a connected network and to north, south and to east, west. And it seems like we are edging ever closer. So being able to take advantage of low cost and easy to implement projects, I think, is really important and to getting us where we need to go. I was actually thinking that I'm here for the National League of Cities and they've been implementing their own bike network. And so we actually see people actually getting their bikes and riding down to see the cherry blossoms using the, the bikes down here in DC. So it's, it's good to see that those things are being in use. I also agree with the preamble adding the word equitably as well as principle number eight to specifically talk about equity and get that added. So thank you for that. I did have a question about, on the principles themselves, if you could go to that. I want to make sure that when we talk about safety through bikeway design, that we're really talking about the complete street philosophy that we have. So when we say bikeway design, we're not only focused on the bike lane itself. It's the whole roadway itself and making sure that it has a complete street for that. So I was just wanting to confirm that. And then number three, although I like the word comfort, sometimes I wonder when we talk about comfort, it makes it seem like it's an extra piece. Whereas, you know, I think what we had always talked about is making sure that our bicycle lanes are separated and protected from cars. And so I, I wonder if the word comfort is what we're talking about or that this is just a, an expectation or a principle that we are going to maximize separation so that bikes are protected. And then on number six for partnerships, while I like the fact that we talk about identification of partnerships, I'd like a stronger verb more than identify that we're gonna leverage the partnerships. We're gonna do more to promote and, and engage so that we're actually taking advantage of finding the partners to help us build faster. So I wonder if there could be an additional word that's a more of an action verb that could be there in that particular one. And, and then my, my last comment is I think that we are going after, we're gonna be pursuing more Vision Zero dollars, Safe Streets For All Grants. And so i- is that what the end of page three where we talk about the timeline? And I'm looking for my note, it says, project implementation including opportunity for increased funding. So are we talking about the increased funding that we put in for Vision Zero already in our budget? Or is that gonna be potentially an additional ask or additional grant funding we're pursuing? So I wanted to understand a bit more about that. Thank you.
The last question, yes, we think that this is a good candidate going ahead, possibly reapplying for our Safe Streets For All Grant. And in addition to that, there's other funding opportunities that come in through PSRC that we believe this would be a really strong candidate for.
Great, thanks. I'll kind of backtrack from there. So I, I, I concur, identify seems a little weak in number six. Friendly amendment, maybe pursue or something of that nature. But if council has some other language.
What do you think about identify opportunities to leverage partnerships? Councilmembers on, does that speak to your goal with that?
Yes, although I do like Franz's word pursue. I mean, just, I, I wanted a bit more of an, of an action verb.
What was yours?
Just change identify to pursue.
Fine.
Okay. And then, and then back to comfort, number three. The, the word choice for comfort was deliberate in this case and speaks to the Mobility Implementation Plan. I can't give you an exact number of references, but it's well over 10 references in the Mobility Implementation Plan to this notion of comfort. Directly speaks to the level of traffic stress that people experience that has been commented upon. So I, I think it's, the, the intent here is really to make sure that we're aligning this work with prior council policy direction. So that was the, the deliberate choice of comfort in that context. And then your first comment about ensuring complete streets. I think that one way that we've been speaking about this is we're thinking beyond complete streets to complete networks. This is only gonna work if it's all interconnected. And I think that the mayor was speaking about how critically important that is. I, I believe we capture that. But if there are friendly amendments, we'd welcome any, any amendments suggested at this time on attachment B.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to make sure that I, I recall that we had actually adopted complete streets because it was helpful for us to pursue grant funding. So if the current wording, you feel comfortable, still gets us there, that's fine. I actually had an opportunity today to be in a debrief with several DOT folks about grant funding applications and how they can streamline and make their process better. So and maybe as we go along, if there are any edits that are appropriate, then we can work on it at that time. I just want to make sure we're positioned well for grant success. Thanks.
Okay, yes.
Just, just a point of clarification, I, I did want to mention attachment B. If you look at attachment B, the, the language of complete streets is included in number two. It's, we just had enough space for the bolded text. So actually, if you look at attachment B, it says consistent with the city's complete streets policy.
Oh, thank you. I was actually looking at item one about safety and it says, "Safe system approach" and missed the complete streets policy under connectivity. I see it now. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. Exciting. Good presentation. So a couple of comments. On the principles, I support the principles as written with the amendments of changing number six to pursue, adding the equity principle as well as the preamble. I think that's really appropriate. In looking at the map, we're talking about systems approach and whatnot. And looking at the map that was on, let me find it on my PowerPoint, on page seven of the PowerPoint, I still see some potential missing links. And I know missing links can be really expensive. I mean, we've been working on the missing link at the Mountains to Sun Greenway for a really long time. The missing links I see is on Spring Boulevard between 124th and 130th. And I think that we're going to want to have, where it turns to 136, we're going to want to have a connection that goes back towards Bell Red down there as well. So ultimately, I'd like to have those on the long range plans. There also, I don't see Main Street, well, I see Main Street and that does cross over. But there's a, where it crosses over 405 and that, I just drove across that for the first time this week. And I know there's going to be bike lanes there. So there doesn't seem to connect though to the 116th. So we want to make those connections on the current bicycle network. For me, that almost would be a higher priority because it would be less expensive before we build out the new corridors. Let's at least complete what we have. And, and then go for the corridors that you have shown here. So I think that we don't want to take our eye off the ball and have missing links there. I also am very cognizant of the issue that deputy mayor brought up about the right turns with that accident we had three weeks ago. And I remember when I was first on council, talking about getting a crosswalk somewhere with the then transportation director. And I was told, you know, that might be a place that's not really safe, but we shouldn't put a crosswalk there because it gives the pedestrian a false sense of security because it's not a good place. There's not great visibility and we want people, if they're going to cross there, to be really safe. So I think that when we're building out the network, we need to kind of have that mindset as well. We want to build it where we're not going to give bicyclists or cars a false sense that they can just go there anytime and cross the bike lane or that the bike lane, because it's separated, cars will never cross. Because if there's driveways, so I know that there's engineers that do this stuff, but we need to be thinking about that because I don't want to see more people injured on our streets, whether they're walking or biking, which is the more common injuries than driving. So those are my comments. I also wanted to highlight principle four, which I think is a really important multimodal principle that talks about looking at data. And I think that we need to be really careful not to reduce any mode to accommodate a different mode if it will negatively impact mobility as a whole. I would not be in favor, for example, of taking out a bike lane because we have too much traffic on a road to add another car lane. At the same time, if we have too much traffic on a road, I wouldn't be in favor of taking out a bus lane or pedestrian lane or a car lane to accommodate another mode. And I don't mean to not build out the network. What I think we need to do, if that is the case, is acquire more right of way so that we can make sure that all modes have the best mobility possible. If we're going to expand a mode and it needs more right of way, then let's do that. I know it's more expensive than just paint on pavement, but it will probably give all road users a better experience. It will add more safety, but it's expensive. So, but things worth doing are worth doing right. And I think we can do that here in Bellevue. So I think I answered the question about the principles. That's what you need from me. Now this, will this come back to council or no? Because I think deputy mayor said it would, but my understanding was is it would not.
Our original plan is for it to not come back to council, but we do want to come to council with updates on the process.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Councilmember Berksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. Love this project. Love the connectivity, the increased connectivity. I remember some time ago, I was riding my bike in Newport Hills though. And there was a section where the bike lane just ended into a sidewalk, but there was no on-ramp onto the sidewalk. So anywhere as has already been mentioned, we can complete the streets, the network, that'd be awesome. Appreciate the addition of equity. I had a question in here about it initially, so I'm glad to see that. Curious in terms of feedback, so you have comfort, which I actually like because it's actually a higher bar. Like in order to assess comfort, you actually have to talk to riders, right, in order to evaluate it. So how are we, not to get into the weeds, I guess I would just say, I think it'd be awesome to have ways of collecting that input along the route, maybe like QR codes or something where people could scan it and provide feedback at any point reasonably along the route. So you can get some of that more in situ, if you will, feedback. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. This has been a great conversation. I'm really excited about the plans going forward. You know, going back to 2016, 17, we had the levy and worked on that. And Councilmember Zahn was the chair of the Transportation Committee at the time. And, you know, we, it really is great to look back and understand, you know, how much we did and how much it really helped everything. So it's glad to see that even though it's taken some time, we're really expanding that. So we have a great pattern to start with already. So it's, we can really do what we want to in the long run. Things have changed so much, it's like a whole new world, but we're just adding to that. I agree with the comments that have been made and some of these suggestions. I'm really pleased with adding equity. I think we incorporated in different ways then. We were just starting to talk about that and use equity as, and understand what equity was and how we need to get it integrated. So to be at this point now, and that's just a given, we're going for equity in this as well. So really appreciate that. And I agree with Councilmember Robertson on, when I looked at that map, I thought, yeah, we need to connect that through Bell Red, all the way up into that area, places we have in with, you know, the light rail up there. So just a lot of, once you get this started, there are a lot of ways that can additionally be added on that. So we're eventually going to connect the whole city on that part particularly. But right now, we're focusing on this downtown area, which is where most of the transportation is and particularly where it's concentrated. And I think those issues of how do we make it safe are things that, a lot of ideas and, and, you know, there are a lot of places that are really doing some great things now we can learn from, as we always do, and people learn from us. So I think we're just on a great path and I really appreciate it. And it's a lot of work that's gone on for a long time. But it's been very consistent, focused and hasn't gone here and there and everywhere else. It's really focused on this. So we have the opportunity now, the way it's been put together, to really make this thing work. And as you can see, the whole council supports it. And it's really exciting and looking forward to bringing it back with, you know, tweaks and things and any new ideas we can talk about. But we need to get going on this and put it in play. And I really appreciate the mayor's comments at the beginning to put this in context. Because, you know, we worked on that. It's been, you know, seven years or something. It's not too long. But anyhow, thanks very much and looking forward to voting for it next time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stokes. Is there a motion to be mayor?
There is. I move to approve the Bike Bellevue Project Principles and direct staff to work with the Transportation Commission to prepare a recommendation for implementation.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody who likes this, wave your hands.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Staff, the motion, you took that motion as in, as amended, as discussed?
Okay.
Just checking.
We're just discussing that. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have our state legislative update. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce his?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, staff are here to present the council with a mid-session update on the Washington State Legislative Session, as you are well aware of underway. We understand that the state budget process is finally underway and staff will share some updates on both policy bills as well as budget items. Tonight is an informational update. We're not expecting any formal council action this evening. And joining us at that table is Janice Atkins, our Chief of External Affairs. And to her right is Lacy Jane Wolf, Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Relations, both from the City Manager's Office. I don't know if we're going to have a guest from the outside here.
I think she'll be joining.
Partway through.
Okay, and I'll let you introduce her at the time.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having Lacy Jane and I to give you a quick legislative update from Olympia. Our consultant, Brianna Murray, will be joining us for the Q and A portion, if you have any questions. Afterward, we think she is moving between counties right now, but she'll be logging on shortly. It is a busy time right now in Olympia. And so we wanted to come back to you now that we've really moved past the House of Origin cutoff. That's when all of those House bills have to have made it out of the House and likewise for the Senate. And now we really are in the throes of the budget portion of the session. So we'll dive right into a little bit of that detail. Well, thank you. Let's see. Nope. There. Just as a reminder, the resource that we really use as our true north, as we do our work in Olympia, is the state legislative agenda. We spent a lot of great time with you in the fall to make sure that that really does represent what are the most important issues to Bellevue, our residents and our constituents. And so we come back to you on a regular basis for updates and input. But we're going to focus tonight in our presentation on those top three priorities that were in the legislative agenda. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have time for questions on anything you'd like to talk about. But we want to focus in on those priorities first. The first one of those is affordable housing and land use. As far as we can recall, including our colleagues around the city table in Olympia, this is the busiest session we have seen in the last couple of decades on the topics of housing, affordable housing, land use, growth management. It has really been an incredible volume of legislation and we've really had our hands full. That's not a bad thing. It just means we've really been on our toes, juggling a lot of bills at once. One of the things that we want to mention in, you have in your Intergovernmental Affairs Packet Update, a really long state legislative update with a lot of bill status. You'll see there are a lot of density and transit oriented development bills, permitting bills. There are a lot that are still in motion at this point in session. So it did, the cutoff at the House of Origin did thin the number of bills a little bit, but there's still a lot of them. And they all amend the same or complementary RCWs. And so part of what we are trying to sort out over the remaining month is, geez, how are these things not going to step on each other's toes so that at the local level, we can have a sensible way of trying to actually implement these? Because there's a lot of good policy. There are a lot of details that get very weedy. In complement to the affordable housing and land use bills, there's also a vigorous conversation underway about funding. And we heard some updates on that earlier this afternoon. There are two major conversations around funding housing and affordable housing. One is House Bill 1628 from Representative Frank Chop. It would give us a local option, additional REIT. It would also increase the state REIT, excuse me, real estate excise tax over a certain amount or properties of a certain value. This would provide a large funding stream for housing and affordable housing. The second funding mechanism that is still under discussion is House Bill 1149. That's from Representative Theringer, the Capitol Budget Chair, but it really is Governor Inslee's proposal to increase or lift the state bond threshold by, to create $4 billion in additional housing revenue. That is encountering some choppier waters in the Senate now that we are in that part of the session. So it feels like the REIT legislation is getting a little bit more traction than the governor's bond proposal, but it is still a little bit early to say. I'll switch gears for a second into House Bill 1110. And I'll do a first pass at this. Lacy Jane, you might want to add some additional pieces. A couple of quick things that I'll mention that you see on this slide. This bill has been amended many times now in the Policy Committee in the House, in the Fiscal Committee in the House, then on the House floor, and now in the First Policy Committee in the Senate. So this bill continues to iterate and get refined. Every single one of the issues or concerns that Bellevue raised in our comment letter has been addressed and dealt with. So we're really pleased. We can talk about a few of those. You have a few of them up here on the slide. Community amenity, this was a reference that was added a little bit, not at the bill is introduced, but after it came out of the original policy committee and after we had our conversation in January. This was added into the bill as a reference to entrances or proximity to parks, schools and other community amenities. This would have raised the citywide, or mainly, you know, by and large, the citywide units per lot to six instead of four, which is what's in the base bill. That got amended out of committee, excuse me, out of the bill when it went through the Fiscal Committee, House Appropriations. They also in the House added two additional alternative pathways for compliance. So in addition to just complying with the bill as written, there are now two different ways to come into compliance with the bill's requirements. They're outlined here and I won't go into the details, but we can certainly talk about them if you wish. And so through all those different steps in the process, oh, and now, since we even put these slides together in the Senate Policy Committee, they made an additional change that we asked for, which was making it clear that ADUs counted toward the additional units on a lot, something that was important to us because of our position on accessory dwelling units. Lacy Jane, do you want to add anything I've missed?
No, I think I'll just add that as we've been able to resolve most of the issues that council raised at the last discussion, we're really focusing on how this bill interacts with other land use bills. There's a lot splitting bill, for example, that could potentially then double the total density. And so really now focusing on making sure that there aren't additive effects on top of 1110 is where we're at.
Thank you for that.
I'm going to stop you just for a moment and ask staff to shut the glass door back there and maybe just leave it open a little bit for some air circulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The last thing I'll mention here before we leave affordable housing and land use is around the state budget. We originally envisioned a request and put forward a request through our legislators for a matching fund from the state capital budget that would really match Bellevue's own local dollars one to one for under 50% AMI housing so that we could buy the property and make it much more affordable for a developer to do that really deeply affordable housing creation. We were also hoping that other cities, because we're all following a direction from the Department of Commerce to achieve affordable housing targets, we thought there would be a ground swell of similar requests. That ground swell did not manifest. There are only a couple of other cities that requested support for affordable housing. So we pivoted about halfway through the process to seek funds for a couple of specific parcels that we could build deeply affordable housing on. We have not yet gotten traction in the capital budget. We are not giving up hope yet, but, and so there's another month left to go. This is one of those places, you'll hear me say a couple of times, where we plan to engage you as individuals to try to help us get a toehold or reaffirm where we have gotten some traction, which you'll see on the next couple of slides. So we have not been successful here yet, but we are hoping to pick up speed over the next few weeks.
I see Brianna is joining us. Hi, Brianna.
Hello, good evening. Janice, do you mind if I add one comment on this slide?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we've heard back from capital budget writers is they want to invest in land acquisition for affordable housing, but they want to do it through a specific program that is a low interest loan program operated through the Housing Finance Commission. So one of the things we've been challenged with in getting traction for this particular request is the idea of appropriation of grant going outside of that specific program. But if we aren't able to get traction, I do think there are some opportunities through that loan program out into the future years.
Thanks, Brianna. Switching gears to the second of those priority issues on transportation. We just saw the new proposed House Transportation Budget earlier this afternoon. Lacy Jane has already testified upon it. And it had a number of different pieces. The two things that are called out specifically in our adopted state legislative agenda are the mountains to. the Mounds to Sound Greenway Trail in Bellevue. It's really important that we get sequencing of those dollars, so we're not seeking new appropriations, but we're seeking a phasing of appropriations so that we can take advantage of some really important service transportation federal funds that we need to have, we have to have these funded by, I think it's June of 2025. And so the good news is the governor's budget had it where we needed it to be. The House Transportation Budget does not hit that deadline. So this is a place where we're going to need to really speak up, as Lacy Jane did this afternoon, to really impress upon that how important it is to get the funding allocated on a timeline that lets us take advantage of those federal dollars. When we can leverage these different sources together, it's really important. And then the second thing here that you'll see is the SR 521, 24th Avenue Northeast Interchange Project in the Bell Red neighborhood. This, in the governor's proposed budget, he shifted the allocation of the phasing of this project and pushed this project funding out about 10, a little more than 10 years. That's really challenging because this is a high-growth area. We want to make sure that this project stays on track, and so we've been continuing to work towards this. I think in the House budget, it was moved forward. Is that right?
That's right.
So a little bit of good news on this one as well. And then we're working on some kind of secondary transportation issues that are also in the state budget around East Rail and some other projects as well. Anything else to add on transportation?
No, Jenicey, you covered it.
Okay. And then our third area of priority is around services and infrastructure for a growing community. These are our additional two budget requests that we move forward this session. One is for the Community Service Center at Crossroads or Mini-City Hall. We are really pleased to report that in the proposed Senate operating budget, there is funding for this to the tune of a half a million dollars. This is really terrific. We were not as lucky in the House today. We did not see funding in there, but Lacy Jane testified in support of it this afternoon and then followed up with legislators, reiterating the incredible value to our community and to a lot of the residents who are not traditionally as enfranchised and don't find coming to City Hall downtown as comfortable and easy, and the many, many community organization partnerships we have out of that location. So we're, have our fingers crossed to get some more traction there. Again, we may be following up with you for a little help. Pump Station 12 in the Forest Main at Lake Simamish. This was where we're really trying to replace this tremendously aged pump station so that we can make sure to keep our water clean and keep serving all the growing residents of the east side of Bellevue. This was included in the Senate capital budget to the tune of $1.03 million. Really excited about that because these really are the last dollars in so that we can commence that project work and really seize the opportunity where we feel like we can't afford another failure at this pump station. So we did not see that in today's release of the House capital budget. Lacy Jane is going to testify on that budget at 8:00 tomorrow morning and make the case for our lawmakers in the House. We hope we can get some similar success and traction on the House side as well. So that rounds out our kind of top cluster of issues. I'll talk about a little bit of what to expect next, then open up the floor to any questions you might have. In terms of the budget, this really is where we swing into full budget mode down there. What becomes tricky is that we are left with really, really big policy bills, like some of the ones that we've talked about, and also six different budget vehicles at the same time. So they will start to focus more and more energy on reconciling the compromised budgets while we continue to do refinements on the pieces of legislation and, as Lacy Jane said, really see how these bills interfere with one or interact with one another so that we don't do something double what we really intend to have happen on the ground. I will be following up with a number of you to engage on some of these specific items. This is the point in session where a little bit of that personal outreach where there is a relationship can be really helpful, and so we'll follow up with you directly. We really have been waiting to see the budgets because this is one of the critical places where those relationships can really come into play. And then finally, in terms of deadlines, you can see the next Policy Committee cutoffs are coming up midweek this week, Fiscal Committee's next week, and then it is just a couple more short weeks until we get to sign E-Di adjournment on April 23rd. Not very far away at all. So that's our last slide of any substance, and we're happy to field questions on anything you might have. Brianna's up there on the screen, and we're, of course, right here. So anything you might have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from anybody? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation and the update on all the bills and as it relates to our ledge agenda. I am surprised there's one thing not on here, and that's 5352, since it's such a closely-watched bill right now, and, you know, many partners, including sound cities and many municipalities, are watching this very closely. And, you know, for those watching at home, this is the law enforcement vehicular pursuits bill. And a lot of folks are being encouraged to contact the legislature right now because, as you mentioned, there's like a lot of significant issues in front of the legislature right now and it's a very short window to take action. And this is one that may fail to move forward, but maybe not, given the importance around it and how many municipalities around the state are very concerned about this and what this means for law enforcement going forward. So I was just curious what update you might have on that one for us tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll kick it off, and then Brianna might want to add on. So 5352, the vehicular pursuits bill that you mentioned, Deputy Mayor, it was, this is a really important bill to cities. This is the thing that the Senate did, kind of used up their last day doing, was pulling this bill down. It had not technically been heard, and they pulled it to the floor because they heard how important it was to cities to get clarity on a pursuit standard. Now, I think it is, we're trying to get its moment in the House. We know that the Democratic majority really needs to be persuaded that this is something that we need to take action on this year. And so they, I think there was a call to action just today from the cities, asking local officials to reach out to folks they know in House Democratic leadership, again to say, you know, this is a conversation that is worth your time in committee and worth your time on the floor to resolve and get clarity on for this session. There were, in the version they brought forward to the floor in the Senate, there was a striking amendment that did change, wasn't the original version as introduced. It did make some kind of compromises or concessions. We still think that version is definitely important for the legislature to pass, and so it's something that we're, we know all the cities are working in support of right now. Brianna, did I, you want to add any additional context?
I would just add that procedurally, the bill is scheduled for a vote tomorrow in the House Community Safety, Justice, and Reentry Committee, and it's expected to advance out of that committee without any amendments. From there, it will go to the House Rules Committee, and that's really where there needs to be adequate support from the House Democrat Caucus and House Democrat Leadership to bring the bill to the floor for a vote. So the call to action is really targeting members of the House Democrat Caucus and encouraging to advance the bill forward to the floor for a vote. I will note that the Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs did send a letter to the legislature in the House Democrat Caucus earlier this week outlining that even if the bill were to pass into law, that they would like to see the legislature take up additional vehicular pursuit policies in future legislative sessions. And I think that letter has some legislators taking pause as to whether or not it's worthwhile to advance a policy this year, which is another reason you see a lot of push for reaching out to legislators, asking for them to, despite the WASPIC letter, advance the incremental progress bill that is before them.
Brianna, and that, the committee tomorrow, is that Rep. Goodman's committee?
It is. And they did not hold a public hearing on this version of the bill. They, because they held a public hearing on the House version of the bill earlier this session, so they didn't feel the need to go through another public hearing process. They just planned to advance it out of his policy committee. The other, the House version of the bill went to House Transportation. The Senate version is anticipated just to go directly to Rules.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a comment now, calling Councilmembers on. Is there any discussion about how some of these housing bills, like 1110, how the covenants make large areas of the city exempt from this and that it's going to, it feels like it's going to just target certain neighborhoods? Doesn't feel very equitable. It doesn't seem like what the goal is for the city in terms of having affordable housing everywhere that there, so is there any discussion about that?
Yes, Mayor, there certainly is, and I know, as we have heard a lot of feedback from our own residents and constituents here, we've definitely pushed some of those conversations to Olympia. What we've heard back, because that concern is not, you're not alone in that concern and recognition, is that while that is an acknowledged concern, they don't feel like the, that they are, there are legal constraints as to how you may retroactively impact any existing covenants. The bill is clear about making sure that any covenants that are prospective cannot preclude missing middle housing or middle housing types.
So future covenants.
Yes, and part of what is challenging is, further challenging, is that we don't know which individual deeds and individual properties have what types of covenants on them. And so really, it is a difficult thing to speculate about because it could be a lot. It could be a whole lot. It might be a lesser amount. It's really going to be a difficult thing to have to unravel piece by piece. Brianna, I know legally, we've raised this with you in the past. Do you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I mean, you're exactly right. Legislators share the concern, Mayor. They equally see the inequity, and I think many, if not majority of them, would like to have the provisions apply retroactively. But as they've consulted with their legal counsel, it's pretty much come back from their legal counsel to say, sorry, you don't have the authority, even in changing state law, to do that because it would be a violation of contract law. So I think there is a shared sentiment there, but a legal challenge, and that's why you see the bills crafted the way that they are. I think legislators are, I've heard several of them just in the last week say that they're skeptical about the legal analysis they're receiving and that they want to tackle that issue in a future legislative session. So I don't think that discussion will go away with the passage of any of the bills. I think it will be something that continues to be discussed.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's interesting being here in DC at National League of Cities because what I was hearing is that there are many other states that also have this same preemption discussion around zoning, like California, Colorado, Oregon, and Arizona. Wyoming and New Mexico, the preemption they tried to do and did not succeed. So it sounds like it is not something just confined to Washington State. What I didn't hear, and I was hoping to understand, is there are two bills that both look at density. One is the 1110, and the other is the TOD bill. Is that the 5449, something like that? Can you comment? Oh, 5466. Can you comment on our, what will, how do these bills work together? They don't seem like they necessarily are in alignment, and it's not really clear to me how that would work if both of them are moving forward. They seem to have some conflicts and some definitional issues. Could you comment on that?
Absolutely. Councilmembers on, you have put your finger on a really big question that we are asking not only to ourselves but to lawmakers to say, hey, these are really important policy issues. We are generally broadly supportive of the policy drivers behind them, but the details matter intensely. Senate Bill 5466, you have an update on it in your materials. This is the Transit Oriented Development Bill from Senator Leas and Representative Reed. This bill moved very quickly out of the Senate with, I think, almost no amendments, and then came over to the House where it is getting much heavier scrutiny. The difference between the two at a high level is that 1110 really is about trying to create those middle housing types throughout different residential areas of a community, adding more duplexes, more triplexes, cottage housing on bigger lots, stuff like that. The idea here with the Transit Oriented Development Bill is, in concept, it should really be focused around high-frequency, high-quality transit. But it gets into a great level of detail around floor area ratio, parking requirements, a number of different design review components, affordability as well as grant program. There's a whole lot packed into this legislation, and there are, as you mentioned, Councilmembers on, a number of inconsistencies in definitions between the two different bills. We have been working quite aggressively on 5466 to improve it, not unlike the way we did on 1110, to really say, hey, based on our experience in the Spring District and based on our experience in Wilberton and downtown, here are how we think you should try to structure these floor area ratios to be successful and to get developers to take advantage of affordability bonuses, to be able to build that additional density in. Here are some really, you know, smart ideas about how to define transit. We're still at odds about whether or not this should apply to just frequent regular bus service. Should you be really transforming the underlying land use for just regular bus service versus BRT or light rail or commuter rail? So we are, I'd say that this bill, unlike 1110, which kind of started big and hairy and kind of gets refined as it goes through the process, 5466 kind of zoomed out of the Senate and is now getting a little bit of, hitting some headwinds as people go like, oh, gosh, how do these two work together? These are treading upon, in some places, the very same, you know, blocks and lots, literally. How do we make this successful? There's not a ton of time left, and there are a lot of really thorny details to sort out. So we're working really assertively. We've had some good conversations with the proponents, and AWC is helping be a convener of those conversations, but there is a whole, whole lot of stuff that continues to not get smaller as the bill moves forward, but just keep changing shape. So this has been a little more slippery to get our arms around. I don't know if Lacy Jane or Brianna want to add more, but this is like a big, a big item of discussion that we're working a lot on right now.
Any other comments or, yes, Councilmember Robertson?
Yeah, there, this has been the most busy ledge session that I can ever remember. So a couple of comments based on what has been said. It is, there's the lot-split bill, there's the TOD bill, there's the missing middle bill. I just was scanning through as I was listening to the discussion, the latest version of House Bill 1110, which is about the sixth or eighth iteration, and it actually incorporates the lot-split legislation into it. I don't know if you picked that up. So it does, I think it's likely that those two bills could pass potentially and not the TOD bill. On the covenants, it also prohibits future declarations of condos, et cetera, from affecting it. But I just wanted to weigh in on the covenant issue because I didn't want staff to get the misimpression that the entire council is wanting to get rid of all covenants for the missing middle housing bill. I personally do not. I think they are a property right. I think they are a contract right. Now that said, my lot, I looked at my covenants just recently in context of the legislation. I can not split my lot, nor can I even add a detached ADU to my lot. And I know that there are people who are talking about putting covenants on their land right now before these bills pass. So that is something that people buy into. A covenanted neighborhood has value, and people invest because of that. And I do not think that we should be advocating as a body to violate people's property rights or contract rights.
I don't think that's something that we have decided on our way on.
No, 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 I know. I just wanted to say, I'm giving my opinion. You gave your opinion. I just wanted staff to hear.
I was pretty neutral about it. I was asking if it's come up in conversation.
Okay, that wasn't what I gathered. But I'm, it's not a criticism. I'm just saying, I feel differently.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, it's not like we have decided as a council on our agenda on this.
Right, that's what I wanted to say is, that's, we haven't decided, so I don't want staff to get the misimpression that we should be down in Olympia advocating for that. That's, that's my point. And if the council decides to do that, that's a council decision, but my perspective is that we should not. So thanks for the presentation, and the written materials are always so excellent. I know that it takes a lot of effort to distill down the thousands of pages of bills and to follow the bouncing ball every week. So you guys are, as soon as the legislative session is over, I hope that our legislative team takes a vacation because you guys will have very richly deserved it. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I can't tell Council- I can't tell Councilmember Stokes if you're raising your hand, if you want to comment or if you're stretching. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I understand what Councilmember just said. I don't, I haven't detected. I want to make it clear, I haven't detected staff doing something that's contrary to that. We're, that's an issue that, as I understand it, we're all trying to figure out how to work around that. Eventually, things are going to change. And, but we have to do it the right way. You have to go legally and all those. There are a lot of issues on that. So it is unfortunate that we are losing some opportunities to prepare for the future. But I think that is something we work on. And again, I don't think Bellevue and the staff has made any clear, you know, comments that we want to get rid of the covenants. That's just something we work on in terms of how do you make it work with those special and how do you pass those kind of things along to people who maybe want to do something different? It's a big conversation. It's going to take a while. I'd be really surprised if there's any legislation that comes through this year that affects that. But it's something we have to, the new world is going to have to deal with that. Because this is, this goes back to the 60s and 80s. But it's here and we're not going to do anything that violates that. So it's all going to have to be done legally. So I just didn't want any impression that we're somehow doing something that's not quite what we should be doing. So I appreciate that you've been very instructive and, I think, neutral in that sense of what we do with this and recognizing that this is an issue and that to achieve the big overall goals, we have to make some kind of changes in how things are built in the neighborhoods. But that doesn't mean the neighborhoods can't be great because we have a lot of neighborhoods that are great that don't have covenants. So it's just one of those issues to work through. So I appreciate your even and very informative comments about this.
Okay. No other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Berksdale.
I'll keep it short. I just want to say thank you for balancing the interest and also just staying on top of all the, all the work that's happening in session right now. And then in terms of housing, I'll just say, you know, I think, you know, I appreciate that our legislator, legislators are taking up this issue. I mean, there are years and years of history around housing in our state and in our country. And I think these are tough things to grapple with as we, as we move to a more equitable society. So I'm glad there, those discussions are happening and thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. And of course, the next time we have an opportunity to be in front of you, we will hopefully have an idea of where everything landed and what it all adds up to for us because a lot of the land use and affordable housing pieces in particular will be very relevant as we get really into the deepest throes of our comprehensive plan update. So we'll be working closely with all of the staff and CD and DS and others to make sure we help everybody understand and make good sense of what this all shakes out like.
Thank you. So in our packet, we have a really good overview of the State, Federal, King County, and Puget Sound Regional Council intergovernmental affairs. So that is in the packet. It's just, it's not preferred discussion tonight. So we will take a break right now. We will come back at quarter till and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are back. So next up, under ordinances, resolutions, and motions, we have ordinance 6732. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, Mayor. Ordinance 6732 is an ordinance that has been drafted based on feedback that we received from the council at the March 13th council meeting regarding permit applications and as well as extending them. Tonight's staff are here to answer any questions you might have before you take action. That one, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. We're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Greg, do you have anything you want to start with?
Well, I do, I do have a quick presentation. I can make it brief since you have already seen this. Just a quick reminder that the proposed ordinance does extend applications and permits, building and clearing and grading applications, and issued permits by 180 days. Council requested additional information on March 13th. I'll respond to that and also directed staff to bring the ordinance back this evening. We do recommend adoption. Move forward to our agenda here. I'll talk a little bit more about the direction and the number of affected permits. I believe Councilmember Zahn wanted to know how many projects were affected and then we'll get into some of the other details of the ordinance. The, I mentioned the number of impacted projects. There was also a request for some more information on the pros and cons of taking this action and also a request that it include projects through June 30th that are attempting to come in to vest to the 2018 construction codes. I'll also talk about the council direction to initiate a land use code amendment and engage with stakeholders. The number of per, applications and permits for projects that are affected is approximately 10,000. You see that at the lower right corner of this chart. To the upper right, MEP indicates mechanical electrical plumbing permits. Those are included with the projects that are affected by this action. And at the lower left, TCO indicates temporary certificate of occupancy. So that tells you the status of the permit for the projects. The pros and cons really come down, comes down to finding that right balance between helping the development projects right now at a time when we have a diff, we have difficult market conditions and it provides greater certainty to the projects while also the need to balance the implementation of changes as the code is changed. And we do have a code change coming up this summer. The ordinance has been amended to cover through June 30th and I think that does make sense. I think that strikes that right balance. It will affect several hundred applications that are likely to come in in that time period. It's hard to judge exactly how many there will be. There was also a request for information about the phasing of major projects. I discussed that a little bit two weeks ago and I'll just clarify that this action does benefit major projects that can propose a schedule for phasing. And I think I talked at that time about an example with a high-rise project that perhaps has a couple of high-rise towers, maybe a podium and a below-grade garage. By adding some additional time in the application process and in the issued status for construction, it does lengthen that overall phasing of the whole project. There was direction from council on March 13th for staff to initiate work on a land use code amendment that would give the land use director additional ability to extend vesting for certain land use approvals. And that, just a reminder that that is on a separate track going forward. It will include a public hearing and then we'll come back to council. And we are scheduling meetings with stakeholders as requested by council to continue that engagement. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Greg. Deputy Mayor, do you want to make a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to adopt. I move to adopt ordinance 6732, extending the life of certain complete building permit applications, complete clearing and grading permit applications, issued building permits, and issued clearing and grading permits when complete permit applications have been submitted to the city or the issued permits remain active between the effective date of this ordinance in June 30th, 2023.
Okay. Any comments or questions? I know we've been through all this, so I think we should be pretty easy. I see Councilmember Zahn has her hand up. Go ahead.
You know, I just wanted to thank Greg for pulling the data and helping us understand the magnitude of the permits and these questions that we had last time. I, I'm ready to support this. I just wanted to express appreciation for closing the loop on those questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're at the end of our meeting here, but we are, first of all, I'm going to say that the April 10th meeting is going to be canceled due to spring break. And then we have those two executive sessions at the end of the meeting here. I'll read my little blurb. Go find my little blurb. Here we go. The council will now recess to executive session for two items. The first item is regarding pending litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101I and will take approximately 20 minutes. The second item is regarding property acquisition pursuant to RCW 4231101B and will take approximately 20 minutes. The council will adjourn from the executive session. So we will not come back for any more meeting and we will go out to our exec session. Thank you.